Welcome, and I'm calling the March 27, 2025 Planning Board Public Hearing to Order. In the absence of the Secretary, I will call the roll. Chair LaFaro is present, Vice Chair Finerdy.
Present.
Gloria Zuckerberg, Secretary's absent. George Mutu.
Present.
Tom Neely.
Present.
Kate Fulham.
Present.
David Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the public in the United States of America. To your Republican Republicans, all nation under God, we declare the Constitution of Justice for all. Thank you. We have a pretty full room. I just need to give you some safety notes, and that is, in case of an emergency, these two doors open, go down the stairs to your left, and out the front door. Those are the exits. Thank you. So we're going to go in order with the agenda, which is Verizon Wireless, Council, do we have notice?
We do, Manager.
Who's representing? Yes, please. Yes, we'll come to the podium, and we'll read it into the record. Tom.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 27, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled Verizon Wireless, 1665 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike. The application is to replace a 90-foot, 95-foot tall existing pole with a 95-foot-tall wireless communication pole on a 58,600-square-foot site improved with the utility building located within the CR-200 zoning district and the Aquifer Protection Overlay District at 1665 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-24-4-39.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair LaFaro, members of the Planning Board. I'm Eric Hellman of Amada Law Group, PLLC, office at 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New York SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. As a starting matter, if I could just, I have hearing reports that I would just like to mark into the record if I could.
Yeah, why don't you give them to the desk? Do they need a copy of the reference?
Yeah.
You guys want one of these? You can give us an overview, please, of the.
Sure. Verizon Wireless is a public utility under the laws of New York State and holds licenses with the Federal Communications Commission. Verizon Wireless is seeking site plan and special exception approvals to replace illegally existing wireless communications facility, which has been situated at the subject property for over 60 years with a new wireless communications facility at the same height and in the same location. The subject property is located at 1665 Bridgehampton Sag Harbor Turnpike, Sag Harbor, New York, and is developed with a one-story building that is used as a telephone exchange facility, as well as a fenced equipment compound and heavily wooded area toward the rear of the property. Verizon Wireless is proposing to replace the existing 95-foot-high monopole and equipment within the existing fence compound with a new 95-foot-high monopole and related equipment. Verizon Wireless is experiencing a substantial wireless service deficiency in the vicinity of the subject property. Once the replacement facility has been constructed and activated, the service deficiency will be alleviated. As acknowledged by the Planning Department, the subject property is considered an opportunity site under the town's wireless ordinance, as it is developed with a utility pole, and the replacement of the facility is permitted as a continuation of a nonconforming use with no increase to the degree of nonconformity, excuse me. Verizon Wireless is proposing a concealment design for the replacement monopole, such that the antennas and cabling would be hidden inside the monopole. To further minimize any visual impacts, the concealment monopole would be painted white to blend in with Horizon. Verizon Wireless appeared before this board on September 14, 2023, for the pre-submission conference, and on February 27, 2025, for the seeker review. I have a number of experts with me this evening who can assist with any questions from the Board or the community. Unless there are any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I mean, we've seen this in our pre-app report, so we understand it's an in-kind swap.
Correct.
And for the better, actually, because it's a stealth pole. Are there any questions from the Board? I have a number of names here to call, but they might be part of your team. Daniel Focas.
I'm part of the team.
Part of the team. Michael Lynch.
Yeah, I'm part of the team.
Part of the team. Martin Levin.
Part of the team.
Part of the team. Kristiana Castilek.
Part of the team.
Part of the team. And Robert Monteleone.
Part of the team.
Wow, you came fully prepared.
We do our best.
Okay, so at this point, is there anyone from the audience other than the team who would like to speak to this application? Okay, is there anyone on Zoom?
No one is here, though.
Okay, agreed, thank you. So hearing that, we'll close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
All is abstention, six in favor, two absent. Thank you. Thank you for bringing your team.
Very well, thank you.
So we're moving into King Lane Estates. Do we have notice, Council?
We do, Manager.
Three. George, please.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 27, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled King's Lane Estates. The application proposes a four-lot subdivision of an 8.73 acre vacant parcel situated in the CR-60 zoning district and agricultural overlay district at Sri King's Lane, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-99-1-47.1.
Please, David.
For the applicant, David Gilmore Jr., Greenberg Troad, 2317 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton. This application is before you tonight for a pre-application public hearing. This is a four-lot subdivision, as the map indicates. It qualifies as minor under your zoning code. The properties in the CR-60 district and all the lots meet the minimum lot area requirement. We have two maps in front of you today. One map has a dedicated right-of-way that ends in the cul-de-sac, and the second has a flag-lot access. Since we're here for a public hearing, it's a pretty straightforward application. We'll look to hear some comments from the public. It is my client's preference to move forward with the dedicated right-of-way.
You're proposing dedicated road?
Private, privately.
Private road?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to form an HOA to take full priority?
Yeah.
So we have quite a few people wishing to speak, so let's get right to it. Fernandez Alcor.
Right here?
Yes, please.
Yes, I would like.
Yes.
Please. This would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And my objection.
We'll go with the gentleman.
Young lady, gentlemen, or you? Please read carefully.
Thank you.
The email that I sent to.
Excuse me, we have to go to the podium to speak for the recording.
Hereback, November 2024, I sent an email, which is right there, a copy of it. I would like you to go through it. If you have any questions, please let me know, and I also give you my response for today, my objections to this project.
So your points of opposition are traffic congestion, neighborhood welfare, and character of the neighborhood lighting? Those are primarily the key areas that you are suggesting would be problems. Is that correct?
Back 20 years ago, there was a similar project. I was rejected, because the issue, the main issue, is the traffic, congestion right here in King's Lane, and North Sea Maker's Road. Last summer, there was a big accident, and basically, everybody came along King's Lane for three, four hours, and things are getting worse. Back 20 years ago, there was very little traffic, and this project was rejected, because the issue endangered not only to the people that come to visit the town, but for the residents of King's Lane. Most of them, 80% senior citizens. So we're very concerned what the consequences would be for the community and for the town itself, because the traffic is getting worse. You have North Sea Road right here, I'm sorry, North Main, and there is a big house going on, and there is a development right there, and eventually, it's going to get worse. So I would recommend strongly, as you see in my email, to really consider to a real technical research about what can be done using artificial intelligence, sensors, data data, and really understand what is happening in that area. And not only that area, but all along, North Sea Maker's Road. So you already have installed a spot fine, but you're going to need more than that. This area is growing too fast, and you have to really take into consideration what kind of technology you can bring in, and really do a study that will give you a good idea what would be like three years from now. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. We will read the report. Maggie Vavinka.
I'm part of the team.
You're part of the team, okay. Sarah Churchill.
Also part of the team.
Okay. Maurice Corrigan. Somebody left? Okay, I can't quite make this out. Doris Churcher? Taylor, can you go up to the mic, please? Yes, please give us your name, just for the.
Sure. My name is Doris Taylor, and I reside at 356 North Sea Me Cox Road, and my property abuts against this proposed subdivision to the north. And I've had my property for about 50 years, if not more, and my parents before myself. And I rented the field where this subdivision is proposed from the DeWiles in the early 1980s, because I used it for carriage driving with my horses. It was obviously cleared, not cleared, but it was grass and maintained by myself. And the DeWiles left parcel closest to me wooded, and that was wonderful, because it provided security and privacy from what else might be out there, although it was only myself at that point. And now my horse pastures are right on the north side of the subdivision. I have four-foot wire fencing that goes along my fence line there, just right on the fence line, and my horse pastures are directly on that side also, not against the wire fencing, but they're on that side of my property. And when excavation and clearing begins next to my property, my horses will no longer be able to live in their home pastures because of all of the activity and the noise and so forth, and trees will be toppling down and so forth, and they will be worried about maybe their property is going to be invaded, and it will be definitely a security and a safety problem. A wall of evergreens on my perimeter from the time of clearing would help this issue, but not after completion of the construction, because also, the damage would have been done with the frightening situation there. And I certainly can't afford to put the shrubbery up there that really needs to be done to protect my side of the property. And I pray that the new owners and this board will understand and assist with my concerns on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Emile Jackson? No, speaking? Roth? I cannot make this out at all. Roth E.
Roth E. Smith, Roth?
He's not going to speak.
He's not going to speak either, okay. David? I just have a question. What? Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak, or anyone on Zoom?
No one is here, though.
Thank you. It's a pretty wooded.
I'm sorry, one person just raised their hand.
Yes? Harry Delalio. Yes.
There we go, sorry about that.
It's okay.
I also joined this.
Just state your name for the record. State your name for the record officially.
Perry Delalio.
Thank you.
And just two quick questions. The subdivision application, is this deemed that all of the property is fully clearable, or since this is wooded property, that there's going to be clearing restrictions?
It's not in a protected overlay district. It's the agricultural overlay district, but there will be clearing, some clearing, yeah.
So is there a restriction on the volume of clearing based upon the square footage of the individual lots?
No.
No, we're under like restriction as of now.
No, not as of now.
And?
Well, we can require buffers on this property.
Okay. And the fact that it hasn't been agricultural land, and it's become wild woodland for 20 or 30 years plus, does that impact any of that requirements or allowances?
Nothing to do with clearing, unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Kevin on Zoom?
No one else.
So I did have a question, interesting enough, relating to this. It is a heavily wooded parcel, and you're not an APOD, so we can't require that X number of acres be maintained. But that northern border, where you have some substantial trees, could be incorporated into a buffer? You would consider that, yes?
Yeah, we'll work through the process with the Board, and we've got a long way to go. This is the first public hearing, so.
Yeah.
Sure. My client's not here tonight to discuss it with him.
Yeah.
Certainly have the opportunity to have a full discussion.
Yeah, it's a pre-app. Any other questions from the Board?
No. Nope.
So, thank you. Entertain a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by George, all in favor. Aye. Abstention, six in favor. So you can write your comments to us. You have a 10-day written comment period, so send the letters in. Okay, we're going to Ashley Caparro. And do we have notice, Council?
We do, Manager.
We do.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law 142022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 27, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the site plan special exception application entitled Ashley Caparro. The application is to convert the existing 3,500-square-foot antique retail store into a non-medical cannabis dispensary and associated parking on a 36.211-square-foot parcel situated in the Highway Business District, New York State Agricultural Sensitive Area located in 978 Montauk Highway Watermill Tax Map 9001013-49.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Martha Reichert. To me, Latham Shea, Kelly Dubin, and Cordero, 33 West Second Street, Riverhead, New York, for the applicants. As described in the hearing notice, this is an improved parcel. It was previously used as an antique store. It had a second-floor apartment that has, that use has been abandoned and discontinued since residential uses aren't permitted in the same building as a cannabis dispensary. The existing principal structure is historic. We are proposing to make the building ADA accessible, but there are no changes to the exterior, especially, well, there are no changes to the exterior facade that faces the street, which is what the public will see the most. There will be minimal changes to the southerly facade in order to create the ADA access into the building. Parking will be increased from the existing parking that is there now to accommodate what's required under the code. There'll be 28 spots, there'll be sufficient ADA parking as well. We've made plans for electric chargers as well, and taken into, you know, account all of the different site plan requirements for this parcel. We are proposing a secondary exit onto Willow Street, whereas the Montauk Highway curb cut will only be for ingress. There will be no left turns out of there, although there will be egress for right turns only, but two-way traffic will only be from the Willow Street side. What is the age of the building? So it's a very interesting building, right? It dates back to the Rose family in Watermill, and there are portions that go to the 1700s, but the majority of the structure is sort of considered to be from the 1800s. There have been additions over the years, but sort of the, I'll just go to the map. This section of the building is probably one of the most historic. Again, it was in the Rose family for generations, so there were additions, as is commonplace, with historic structures of that nature. The predecessors in title did renovations in 2015, 17-ish, and there was a quite well-researched Landmarks Board report on the structure itself.
So you have that information already in hand?
Yeah, we have all of that information, so we are not planning on changing the historic nature or the character of the building. Most of the renovations will be all interior, except for creating ADA access into the building, which is an important thing, right? Even historic structures are not exempt from the ADA regulations. The accessory shed, or it's called a workshop, that's what it has a CO for, is not a historic structure. That building will be demolished as part of our plans to create the appropriate parking. And so, again, that was CO'd in the, I believe, in the 70s. It is not of a historic nature, but the principal structure is.
We have an active application of the parcel right across Willow Road.
Correct.
We're talking about driveways today, and your driveway, if a secondary driveway is put in that other property, it could conceivably line up with your new driveway. Do you have the site plan up there, Brennan?
For the other side, or this?
This one, right here, yeah. So that's all designed for your parking, isn't it?
Correct. And when we went through the pre-submission application process with this board, as part of the special exception standards for a non-medical cannabis dispensary, a traffic impact study is required, and this board asked us to take into account the site plan application of 1004 Montauk Highway. So we did that. You know, based on talking to our engineers and our traffic engineers, the location of that driveway on Willow is really in the right spot in terms of creating enough space from Montauk Highway and the Willow Street intersection, right? So there's enough visibility and room. But we reached out to the applicant across the street and said that we were willing to work with them if need be, and we remain willing to do it. But I think if you look at where that driveway is placed, and based on the traffic impact study and all the other discussion that we've had, that's the most optimal location. And so that's sort of where we had it.
Any questions from the Board? I have Al Caparro and Ashley Caparro here, so you're applicants. Do you wish to speak at all?
Not unless you want to talk to us.
Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak to this application? Anyone on Zoom?
Coming on right now.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, we have no visual.
Okay, we have video.
There you are.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am the applicant's traffic engineer, and just wanted to let everyone know that I'm here in case anyone has questions, or I can give some direct testimony if anyone would like me to summarize the traffic study.
Can you give us your name for the record, please?
Of course. My name is Rebecca Goldberg. I'm a professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer. My company is IMEG, with a business address of 177 Crossways Park Drive, Woodbury, New York, 11797.
Thank you. I believe we had that traffic report.
Yes, we did discuss it in the previous meeting.
Yeah. I'm not quite sure you read that, but we had that traffic study, and we did discuss it.
Again, I'm just offering myself in case there are questions.
Thank you. I don't, there aren't any questions at this point, so I'm sure they'll be later, but not at a public hearing. So thank you very much for coming.
Of course. I'll be here, thank you.
If there are no other speakers, no other questions, we'll entertain a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by Kate, second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
All is abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last public hearing is for Two Trees Farm. Do we have notice, Council?
We do, Manager.
We have, we have notice, and Kate will read it into the record.
Please take notice that in accordance with Local Law Number 14 of 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, March 27, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. at Town Hall 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, and via video conferencing to consider the Ag Construction Permit Special Exception and Covenant Amendment entitled Two Trees Farm. The applications are for modifications to the approved Ag Construction Permit Special Exception Approval for this site, including two new sand rings, restoration of the sand ring that was partially constructed, increase in the permissible number of horses to 107 in accordance with the horse density provisions of the town code, four manure-storaged containers, and a farm gate on a 63.1-acre parcel. and a farm gate on a 63.1-acre parcel located in the agricultural overlay district, located within the CR80 zoning district on the east side of Hay Ground Road, south of Two Trees Lane, and west of Long Pond Bridge Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-83-1-1.11.
Okay, good evening. Karen Pate Murfree, I'm the attorney for Hay Ground Road Development LLC, the owner of Two Trees Farms, and we're requesting an amendment of this approved horse farm site plan and special exception approval. The application requests changes which will provide safety for the operation of the horse farm. Specifically, it proposes two new sand riding rings for horses to be ridden, which will protect their joints and protect the riders if they fall off. Sand is much easier to fall into than grass. I have personal experience of that. Grass rings can be the hard, can be a hard surface if not properly watered. This is a typical accessory horse farm use. Every horse farm has sand rings within the town of Southampton. It is the state of technology, and that's what everyone has. And the Hampton Classic as well has sand rings. These two sand rings will replace a partially-built ring, which will be restored to grass in order to continue to allow for the drainage pipes to remain under the restored area. Meanwhile, the proposed sand rings allow for better drainage. In addition, a farm gate will be installed on Hay Ground Road to prevent any loose horses from escaping. This is more towards the south of the property, down here. So anyhow. The original approved site plan showed a manure storage area on the side of the indoor riding ring. We are proposing an improved manure storage area in which manure is kept in four containers and not what it was originally approved for, which you can see in the original approval of 2012, where they just pile it up next to the indoor rack. It was just a gigantic pile, and you could drive by and see it. This is where it's going to be kept in four containers that can be easily removed from the property on a consistent basis. And this is what we kind of, we did, that happened with Campbell Farm. They had, you know, a consistent removal. That was a much smaller farm. Finally, the town code provides a formula for the number of allowable horses based on the farm's acreage. Here, the farm can accommodate up to 107 horses, and this application requests that this number be permitted. When the site plan was reviewed in 2011 by this board, the applicant at the time only requested the approval for 89 horses. But the Declaration of Covenants filed in 2011 allowed this number to be increased in the future. In paragraph 18 of the declaration, it says, or for the current owner, it reserves the right to apply to the planning board of the town of Southampton to amend the site plan and special exception permission for any reason, including without limitation, the condition that eliminates, limits the number of horses permitted to 89. The original approval, if you look at that site plan, they did do a calculation for 107, but they went with 89. Finally, I understand, oh, so the number of horses is based on the amount of open space provided for each horse to be ridden or grazed in a field. Each horse has a minimum of 20,000 square feet. As you know, the first 15 acres is, they use 30,000 square feet for smaller farms. But once you get past 15, the additional, the 16th horse needs a minimum of 20,000 square feet. Finally, I understand that some neighbors who are here this evening are worried about a horse show at this farm. This is not what this application is about. Every one of these items that we have requested are needed for current users of the horse farm, and they will be used every day by riders. The horse farm is entitled to hold special events, but it is not applied for it. A special event permit is not part of this application, and it's not part of the planning board's jurisdiction. It is the jurisdiction of the fire marshal. This is simply an application for modification of a special exception approval and site plan for, for a safe operation of an existing horse farm. Thank you. And now, I guess, if you have any questions or want to open it up to the public.
Could you discuss any possibility of going through planning at the site or having planned?
We had, we're trying to get through this part first, and then, you know, that was something we'd have to deal with the fire marshals, and I believe there may be some discussion with some of the adjacent neighbors. Who, you know, by the way, when they, in the Declaration of Covenants and Restrictions, it says, the horse farm was there first. And when you buy next to, as you're, I'm sure you're familiar, Dennis, it says that you have to be aware when you're next to an agricultural use of dust or, and noise. And actually, you know, if you're next to a potato farm, they're going to take the potatoes out at 5:30, and there's going to be dust and chemicals and stuff. Here, this is, I think, a less intense use on a daily basis.
Could you confirm that permitting for any events is not going to be before this board?
Yes, it's, yes, it's a very extensive process with the fire marshal, and I believe they even notify the neighbors. There's going to be.
The town board actually knows, not?
No, they, they now made it the fire marshal. It used to be back in the day, you know, we first started out, so anyhow, so. Any other, you have?
At this point, we have people here, so let's.
Okay. Let's hear them in, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Brian Zaid?
Hi, good evening. I'm Brian Zaid. I'm a homeowner on Two Trees Lane, and I'm on the board, the president of the board of the Two Trees HOA. The submission that we saw has a number of inadequacies. For one, the plan seeks to increase the number of horses without showing where the horses will be stabled, fed, watered, or pastured. And the waste management plan includes inclusive of dumpster location and schedule for manure disposal. The approved fixed location for manure, which is a concrete structure and the pickup on the north side of the property, has been abandoned, and there are multiple dumpsters now randomly placed on the south side of the property. There's also a question of additional parking. There's only 68 parking spaces, so with the additional horses and staff, we're fearful that'll be problematic. Multiple town code violations are still pending, including violations relating to site disturbance, change of use, and failure to obtain building permits. The board should also be aware that there are presently two active litigations in Supreme Court Suffolk County involving the issues presented here. These involve the violation of and enforcement of existing covenants, restrictions, and easements. Even with the town involvement in pending litigation, we've seen little or no movement on these violations and a lack of good faith, in our view. The resolution approving the site plan in 2011 referred back to the 1994 approval and indicates that the new site plan must comply with the special exception standards set forth in the 1994 resolution. Restrictions were put in place with an eye toward the residential development of the adjacent parcels. As mentioned, the number of horses is limited to 89. That's down from 94, in 1994, when the farm was, was larger. Reference, sorry. Okay. Additionally, no public address system was permitted. An onsite tent was to be removed. And there's only one designated polo field on the east side yet. For the past several summers, the single field has been converted into a total of three polo fields. And the lack of parking pushes the cars and the horse trailers into the drainage recharge areas at least four days a week. And additionally, the cars go onto Two Trees Lane and Polo Court very regularly. To review this application, it's necessary to review all the CNRs and easements filed with the initial subdivision approval and the subsequent covenant established on the south portion of Lot 18, where, when Polo Court was sold and developed in 2015. Without looking at the comprehensive site plan showing the number of horses stabled in each barn, the drainage map, which connects the farm to Two Trees Lane and Polo Court catch basins, the location of the storage areas, working sheds, drainage areas, recharge areas, it's nearly impossible to understand the impact of this application. There were large drainage easement and recharge areas created which prohibited vehicle passage over those designated areas, additionally protecting the open space and the vistas. But the farm owners have created a new internal road directly over the drainage easement, which prohibits driving or parking for pickup trucks, SUVs, et cetera. And so rather than exiting the lot on Hay Ground and re-entering the farm's main entrance on Hay Ground, they are driving over the easement. The proposed plan seeks to build structures within these environmentally necessary areas immediately adjacent to and abutting the residential development. The violation of the covenants and easements by starting construction on new rings without a single permit in place resulted in serious degradation to the land. For three weeks, tractor-trailers dumped about 2,000 cubic yards of fill and bland while simultaneously cutting into the land and removing topsoil. Before any application is considered by this board, the HOA respectfully requests the open violations be resolved and the land restored. Finally, the subdivision of this property was given great thought and planning by this board not that long ago. The restrictions were put in place in the site plan approval resolutions and subdivision, subdivision resolution to protect the open spaces and vistas that would benefit the adjoining residential properties while continuing the operation of the horse farm. The residential use and farm use were addressed by this board in a manner that enabled both to coexist. The proposed expansion of the horse farm operation will prove to be a detriment to the carefully-planned horse farm land use, the welfare of the horses themselves, as well as the shared HOA farm private roads and the 17 individual property owners. The proposed expansion of rings directly affects the necessary drainage easements and is immediately adjacent to the residential properties. The addition of more manure, storage, staff, and parking and the increased number of horses is not what the original site plan and subdivision map together, taken together with the easements, covenants, and restrictions placed on the property, and they're contrary to the original intent of the development site. The HOA and its individual residents relied on these restrictions when they chose to build near an existing farm. The HOA and individual members, property owners, will clearly be negatively impacted, both financially and in terms of the quiet enjoyment of, of their properties by an expansion of the horse farm operation that runs afoul of these covenants, restrictions, and easements put in place prior to their ownership and development of their lots. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, and if you would submit those to us, either digitally or?
Okay, yes.
That would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Carl Benacasa?
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York, for the, for the homeowners association. This is the first time I'm appearing before this board in a capacity other than as an advocate for an applicant. I have represented this HOA for the last 18 months, and it's a great group of people, and they asked me to help them and support them in their endeavors here tonight, and I'm happy to do that. To supplement some of what Brian has said, I think it's important to go through a bit of the history of this parcel. As noted, back in 1994, that's nearly 20 years prior to when this board approved the subdivision at issue, there was a covenant and a condition, I should say, a site plan condition imposed, which contemplated the then 86.5-acre farm operation and specifically limited the number of horses to 94. Interestingly, in that site plan restriction, it required the farm to come back for site plan approval with respect to the number of horses in the event the size of the farm ever decreased. So even then, there was serious consideration by this planning board as to the number of horses, and if the farm size were to decrease, they wanted them to actually come back at that point to reconsider that number of horses. Nearly 20 years later, the, the owner at the time came in seeking the subdivision, which is a 17-lot subdivision that exists today. As noted, as part of that subdivision approval, the board recognized specifically that it, quote, "be in the best interest of the lots of the subdivision" to further limit the number of horses on the farm to 89, a reduction of five. That's consideration, among other things, that this is going to be residential development, and the farm operation was reducing in size by 25%, roughly, from 86.5 acres to 63 acres. So here we are, 12 years after that approval. The subdivision, which was then a proposed subdivision, a development that hadn't been built out yet, has been built out. 17 families live in and around this farm. And the owner of the farm is now looking to expand the number of horses to 107. That is a 20% increase in the number of horses. That is 18 more horses than were approved in 2012. That is 13 more horses than were permitted in 201994, when there were no farm, when there were no residents, there were no homes, and the farm was actually 20 acres large. Without reason, without rationale, and now in the middle of an operating and flourishing community. The plan has no, has presented no information as to where these horses will be stabled, how excess care required for them will be accommodated, how their waste will be adequately dealt with, and where the excess manpower to service these horses will park. Will the additional horses necessitate additional polo fields? The site plan called for one. There's no chance, there's no presentation or application tonight to expand those number of fields. And as Brian noted, the operations currently are using three fields when one was approved. There are new rings suggested or proposed. Those, the plan proposes three new rings located in existing drainage easements, specifically Recharge Area 1, Recharge Area 2, Drainage Easement E, Drainage D, Drainage A, and Drainage B. The original site plan carefully considered the location of the riding rings relative to those easements and relative to the homes. Currently, the closest riding area is greater than 160 feet from the nearest home. The proposed, one proposed ring is located approximately 30 feet from a home. As noted, there are several violations currently on the property, approximately 20 open summonses, one for housing 102 horses in violation of covenant, expansion of the stables without a permit, installation of a tent for temporary, temporary stable, which was specifically prohibited under your approval in 2012. And I believe the chair and vice chair were part of that decision at that time. As Brian noted, two active litigations in New York State Supreme Court regarding the farm's violations of covenants and easements specifically imposed by this board. This board went through great efforts to craft a site plan that would work harmoniously with the neighborhood, a neighborhood that did not yet exist and today does. 12 years later, that neighborhood has grown and flourished, in part due to the careful consideration of this board. In processing this application, we would ask you to carefully consider your original rationale in limiting this farm and its operations, each of the covenants, easements imposed for the benefit of that neighborhood, including drainage covenants, use limitations, protections of used sheds. We believe that this plan violates those all in several aspects and would ask the board to pay careful consideration to that fact when considering this application. I would also note there are several members of the community who wanted to be here tonight, but due to school vacations are traveling. In that regard, I would ask, well, and in addition, two horrible golfers are here tonight from Atlantic Golf Course. And they've asked, I've spoken with them, there are members of the Atlantic Golf Course who are also interested in this application and would like to speak. So in that regard, we would ask that this be adjourned for a second. Thank you very much.
Any documentation you want to submit to us is welcome. Jamie Pelks? Am I pronouncing that correctly? P-A-L, looks like K-E-S, Pelkes, Pelks? Romaine Marto?
One of the applicants.
The applicant. Jefferson Murphy, Jeff? Down, you want to speak? This is a speaking sign-in sheet. Chris and Mario and Lota? Chris and Mario Anlotah? Would you like to speak? Farrell? Hi, how are you?
Hi, Kristen Farrell. I'm at eight Polo Court in Bridgehampton. It's been quite some time since I've been in front of you presenting, but it's nice to be back, nice to see everyone. I am secretary of the HOA, so in that regard, I'm just going to walk you through the HOA presentation materials, which are really just the printed photos. And we're happy to leave these or submit these digitally if you prefer. This is an overview of the farm in 2023. We just happened to have this from one of the real estate agents. You know, obviously, most of the lots were developed at that point, except the first lot on Two Trees Lane, which is still not developed. So all 16 are fully built out. So just a good, clean overview of the farm. You are looking straight on at the farm operation, Polo Field, which has that single Polo Field in the middle. This is what happened in May of 2024, when the farm started constructing the rings over the drainage recharge areas. This is the area of the farm where the operations were always housed when David Valentes owned the farm. This was where the tractors were parked and where the staging area was. That has now been completely disturbed and moved over to the south portion of the lot, which is behind Polo Court. We have a visual on that. So this is pretty much where we're at right now since that disturbance. There's been no efforts to repair the area. There was a stop-work order issued. This was after about three weeks of the tractor-trailers running, about eight tractor-trailers a day dumping, and then cutting into the field on this side. That's just a close-up view of the construction of this ring, and this is directly over the correct. And this was opened up, and there was a new atrium dropped in here, which looked like it had new electric and irrigation brought to that location. This is the axand that is traditionally dropped in that staging area behind the large barn every year of the last, you know, 30 years or so. And because there's no ability to operate in this area anymore, this additional covenant, which was put on the land in 2015 as Polo Court was developed, specifically states there's no driving, parking, fences, riding, any other structures or any, you know, other type of operations supposed to be happening in this particular area on the south side of Lot 18. This is that internal road that we're mentioning, and this is the drainage easement, where the road is going directly over. That's just basically another shot of, you know, the construction area. This is the south side of Lot 18 behind Polo Court, and this is basically now this access point for parking and trailers and staging of equipment, which it has been brought to our attention that in one of the easements or one of the covenants, it actually calls out this area that the farm can in fact use this area for staging operations. There's a pump situation here that I'm sure the farm can speak to. I'm not quite sure what that is. But what we're seeing now is that the employees are parking here and driving over that, you know, designated area for the conservation easement and across the drainage.
Kristen, would you say that the topsoil had been scraped off all those fields?
No, these fields aren't really maintained. I don't think there's been any degradation here, any problem with that. It's just that now there's this, you know, additional use that we haven't seen before with the prior owner. We have one neighbor here who was pretty impacted by this, so we had asked that they go ahead and just place some screening here, which Ramon and I had a great conversation about, but it just hasn't happened yet. And then basically, I think some of the questions from our HOA members are, why are we seeing this entrance here and this driving over creating this new internal road and coming back to the farm this way when they have permitted access here, which is my understanding, where they're asking for the gate? And then the main farm entrance, there's two entrances here, so why is the staff not just entering and exiting their own, you know, access points? Why are we creating this internal road over our drainage areas? So I don't know. I can leave these and submit these if you'd like. Thank you.
You have those in a digital format?
Yeah, we can send that, sure.
That's going to be easier to keep in our file.
Yeah, okay. We'll take these with us.
The visuals are very helpful. That's absolutely helpful. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this application? Well, I have the other side, sorry. Jay Stori?
Hi, Karen Hoag. I think I'm at the bottom. I don't know if my handwriting was clear to read.
Oh, yes, that's you.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, board members. This afternoon, I submitted a letter on behalf of my clients, Jordan and Heather Turkowitz at 22 Trees Lane in Bridgehampton. Yes, Kristen confirmed that she had given it out. They weren't able to be here personally, but they asked if I could read through their letter. I know it's quite lengthy, and you have a copy of it, so I will just focus on maybe some of the highlights is to not repeat a lot of the statements that prior neighbors and Mr. Benicasa had made. Dear board members, thank you for your commitment to our town and for your time tonight. We wish you could be there in person to express our views on this matter, but had longstanding plans we cannot change to visit our son. We want to speak with you today about three themes: being a good neighbor, being a good citizen, and the message we are sending to all Southampton residents, both current and future via this matter. Please allow us to first set the scene of what has happened at Two Trees over the last two-plus years. After a long and gracious stewardship of Two Trees, which included the creation of the subdivision, the farm was purchased in June of 2022 by Hay Ground Road Development LLC, a Florida-based group. We met one of the principals of Hay Ground Development shortly after they closed on the purchase and asked about their plans. They said nothing we planned to keep it as is. The new owners made similar statements to multiple residents in the neighborhood, but their immediate actions showed that they had every intention of making multiple significant changes and had no regard to the legality of any of them. Over their short ownership of Two Trees, we have seen the new owners breach multiple covenants, easements, and restrictions, break multiple Southampton Town laws. We and our neighbors have watched its distress as they illegally brought in heavy machinery to strip, recreate, and destroy the land and natural topography of the farm. The mountain of aggregate illegally dumped on the farm remains, one of the many eyesores which are evident of illegal work. It was only after multiple stop-work orders from the town that the illegal construction ceased, but the cars, trucks, quads, and other motorized equipment continued to illegally drive over recharge areas where such vehicles have been banned. Town enforcement has been helpful and has issued over 40 violations, most of which are still outstanding, and neighbors have filed multiple litigations against Hay Ground Development for their actions. That is the backdrop of this matter, most of which you probably already know. The following is what we hope you consider in your board decisions. At least 17 homeowners purchased land and homes relying on the subdivision plan and its covenants, restrictions, and easements. The subdivision of this property was given great thought and planning by this board not that long ago. The restrictions were put in place in the site plan's special exception approval resolutions and subdivision resolution to protect open spaces and vistas that would benefit the adjoining residential properties while continuing the operation of the horse farm. The residential use and farm use were addressed by this board in a manner that enabled both to coexist. The proposed expansion of the horse farm operation will prove to be a detriment to the adjacent HOAs and their individual property owners. The proposed expansion of the rings, immediately adjacent to some of the residential properties, the addition of more manure, storage, and the increased number of horses are contrary to the intent of the site plan approval. The HOAs and their individual residents relied on these restrictions when they purchased and chose to build near an existing farm. The HOAs and individual members, property owners, will clearly be negatively impacted by any expansion of the horse farm operation that runs afoul of the covenants, restrictions, and easements put in place prior to their ownership and development of their lots. This application is not about a few more horses in a sandring for the current ridership. The new owners have made public their true intentions, including at the very first public planning board hearing, that they want to make Bridgehampton the Wellington, Florida of the North and host a series of horse shows that will rival the Hampton Classic. If Hay Ground Development wanted that, they should have purchased a property with such extensive, should not have purchased a property with such extensive covenants, easements, and restrictions, some of which specifically preclude essential requirements to hold such a tough event without approvals. We hope to remind the planning board that the Classic property, which is surrounded by town property on the south, contains a wetland and is in a specifically created PDD district called the Hampton Classic Recreation Tourism PDD. The town created this zone in 1999 specifically to accommodate the Classic. Significant investment in this unique zone, infrastructure, permanent staff, and logistics, and years of dedication to continuous improvement have facilitated professional management of the Classic's traffic, parking, emergency services, security, garbage, and sanitary waste and manure removal. The Two Trees Farm obviously is not in any specially created district, is surrounded by residential homes, not vacant town land, and does not have the other essential elements possessed by the Classic for a similar event. The intent of the subdivision very clearly is the opposite of creating Wellington of the North. Many aspects of the subdivision are to restrict usage. The resolution approving the Two Trees site plan in August of 2011 referred back to the April 7, 1994 approval and indicates that the new site plan must comply with the special exception standards set forth in the 1994 resolution. Restrictions were put in place with an eye toward the residential development of the adjacent parcels now called Two Trees and Polo Court. There are several specific provisions to highlight. The number of horses was limited to 89, which was down from 94 in 1994, when the farm was a much larger 130-acre horse farm. It's clear that the board wanted fewer horses, not more horses. And with the farm now half the size as in 1994, perhaps the limitation of 89 horses should be further reduced proportionally to the acreage, definitely not increased. Large drainage easements and recharge areas were created, which prohibited vehicle passage over those designated areas, additionally protecting open space and vistas. This was stated in the CNOR's dated April 20, 2013. As mentioned, those have been repeatedly violated. The proposed plan seeks to build structures within these environmentally necessary areas immediately adjacent to and abutting some residential properties. Open space and conservation easements were also created to protect open space and enhance the views for adjacent residential properties. Reference was made to the need for compliance with the Town Code regarding horse shows and equestrian spectator events, limited to no more than three per year, covering no more than nine days in total, subject to Town Board review and approval in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 283. The farm already has polo matches multiple times each week during the summer where there are many attendees. Each of these should constitute a horse show. If so, the farm would be far over the amount code allows. No public address system was permitted on the exterior, and an onsite tent was to be removed. The covenants to have fewer horses and no additional development were integral parts of the approval of the 2011 site plan. If the planning board and town do not enforce these agreements as written and negotiated, it undermines and makes irrelevant any planning board decision, because any covenants can just be overwritten down the road even when nothing has changed. The approved site plan involved the town, various town boards, including the town planning board, and the Suffolk County Health Department. The farm's current owners knew or should have known about all the covenants, restrictions, and easements when they acquired the farm at Two Trees. They now seek to significantly increase the operation of the farm and presumably seek to modify covenants that strictly tailored to limit the operations of the farm. While we believe there are so many significant reasons to simply deny Hay Ground Development their application, we request the following if it is to be considered. Multiple agencies and advisors studied horse density, farm usage, environmental impact, traffic, stormwater, aquifer impact, golden nematoid, open space goals, and other concerns as part of the comprehensive process to approve the 1994 and 2011 plans. The full file should be reviewed for explanation and for the planning board's intended farm usage. Everything studied, calculated, and evaluated in those approvals should be re-studied, recalculated, and reevaluated, and all the work should be done with the same rigor and comprehensiveness as 1994 and 2011. It would seem prudent for the current board to understand the rationale for all the decisions made as they were made for a reason and a significant taxpayer expense. Damage to impact on an illegal usage of an expansion of the farm should be restored, fixed, removed to meet the 2011 and 1994 covenants, restrictions, and easements before the planning board further considers this application. And further, there should maybe be a cooling-off period of at least five years from the time of restoration before Hay Ground Development can refile. This would send the right message to those who willfully disregard the town's laws. Lastly, as mentioned earlier, reference to special events was to be removed from the prior site plan, and this removal should be codified priority by the planning board such that the farm has no ability to hold any special events. Thank you for your time and consideration, Jordan and Heather Turkowitz, 22 Trees Lane, Bridgehampton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have copies of the letter.
Yes, thank you.
Jay Stori?
Oh, Strong. Thank you very much. Jay Strong, 48 Lewis Road, East Quogue. My wife and I actually have a horse farm on Lewis Road in East Quogue that we operate in a similar fashion. We are only one of six remaining legal, what they call, under the zoning of horse academies, similar to Two Trees. So one of the concerns that we have is Two Trees and the Hampton Classic happen to be two of the main pillars of our riding community, and in some ways, it's a large draw for new kids and new riders starting. It's well-established of, again, growing up here myself, for those that don't know, I'm four generations in the boat business also, so if Strong's Marina is us as well. And so recreation, similar to riding, boating, things like that, is why you want to bring your family here and raise them in a community like this. With all respect for, because we all live amongst, you know, businesses like Two Trees Farm, we're all concerned about how that develops or not. But for us as locals and also in business, we hope that we can look at it as a large, you know, range plan on how do we keep them operating within the community. The concern about so much restriction is a concern that we won't be able to operate in the future. Things that were brought up about riding rings, is that a concern for how many new horses are added and things like that? It's actually pushed on a lot of us as farm owners to offer more riding rings so that there's less riders, beginners, amateurs, with professionals for a safety factor, being pushed by the insurance companies. So it's not necessarily, it could easily be viewed that you're trying to make so much more riding, but it's really a safety thing. And the size of the rings matter and all that other kind of stuff. You know, some of the things brought up about the increase of the amount of horses, Dennis can speak to how many horses are at the Hampton Classic for the two weeks that the horse show runs. It's hundreds and hundreds of horses. Safe, good, the difference between 90 and 100 horses is minimal from an operating perspective. And for a year-round business like we run on the horse farm, I think it's also important to think about the seasonality of it. When you're talking about a max of 100-some-odd horses, you're talking about a couple weeks out of the entire year. It is hard to have people riding in January and February around here. It just doesn't happen, you know? A, it's cold, so the safety of the kids and frostbite is one thing. B, it's frozen ground, which horses don't do well riding on hard, frozen ground. So again, from our perspective, you know, again, still trying to be neighborly, but B, we're asking to hopefully keep an eye on the greater perspective of the horse business community for us to be able to actually operate in a, you know, a safe way and a financially sound way that we can actually continue to operate. The more constraints on a lot of these things, it just doesn't make sense for us to continue and invest when it's a big draw for the community that transcends to all other businesses.
How many horses do you have?
On our property, about 30. But again, much smaller piece of property. We're just slightly under 20 acres.
And are you mostly doing riding lessons? You mentioned
You mentioned children.
So it's very similar. We are not allowed to run any kind of horse shows, but because of the size of the property. So we have, we have a twenty thousand square foot indoor riding ring, and we start kids at three to four years old, and then we have adults that ride and compete as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd wish to speak? Is here? Yes, please.
Good evening, Board. I'm Joanne Comber Jimenez, and I have run a horse business out of Two Trees Stables for ten years, and we have seen a lot of change over these many years. I first started out years ago under David and Jane Wolentis. The farm didn't have any of the homes. We would trail ride through the polo field, past, you know, into the hill, they had that beautiful pond there. And I think with anything with growth, we all have to accept change. I think the Hamptons, even through the ten years I've lived here permanently, residently throughout the year, has changed immensely. So we, I think back then when Polo Court and Two Trees was being developed, there was a lot of backlash then. How can this happen? It's a horse farm, and we went through it brilliantly, and a lot of people that actually live at the homes, I've taught their children, and it's just a beautiful community. They're living there, they come over and ride, and I think that's why people come to the Hamptons. The equestrian lifestyle is huge, that's the biggest draw. And I do believe, even since COVID, the numbers of people riding, the people that want horses, ponies for my business has doubled. And now, we're really looking at how can we service our clients professionally, safely, and wanting to get these children that mostly live in the city and adults the opportunity to really enjoy what the Hamptons offers. And that's through horses and just a farm environment. So, you know, I understand both sides of the story, and as you had spoken so eloquently, it's just a change that we're all going about. You know, there's construction everywhere, there's more chains coming, and so now, we're really just expanding. And I think the equestrian lifestyle needs to, you know, really be on solid ground and just keep boosting up. And Two Trees is probably one of the only multi-business facilities left where we actually can offer riding lessons to beginners. It's not a private facility, and I can envision a Hamptons where we can offer that. You know, that's our passion, and I think horses are just so therapeutic and, you know, everyone wants to be part of it. So hopefully, everyone can come together and we can move forward and just, you know, really bring this along. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there someone else? Yes, please.
Hi, my name's Alison Skapoff. I work for Heidi Earl at Firefly Farm. We're one of the businesses that runs out of Two Trees. I'm a little nervous. I've been, been there for about seven, I've been working for her for seventeen years. So I've been on the property for seventeen years. And I would say that there's, like, since I moved here until now, you know, the amount of homes that's come out, like, the people moving out and building homes and having families out here has really increased, and the ability to, I guess, provide a program for people, like, adults and children to ride and ride safe, like, to learn, you have to have a safe environment to do that. And for me, like, this is my livelihood, you know? So it's important for me to, when I'm teaching, especially beginners that don't know how to steer or stop, and they're in, like, we have a couple of rings, and when they're in there with, like, people that are jumping, and it can get, what's the word?
Hairy.
Um, hairy, real hairy. Really hairy. So I would, you know, I would love to be able to see some arenas and, like, to be able to have the arenas that we do have, like, fixed, like, the footing, because, you know, if the rings, if the stop work order, like, permit, or what's the word, stops them from being able to fix the footing in certain rings, then we can't use those rings, and then we're all stuck in another ring. So, you know, like, as far as me and it goes for me, like, I don't have, you know, this is my career, you know, I've been doing this for twenty years, and, and like, I, like, and it's expensive to live out here, right? So you want to be able, like, I want to be able to make money, and I also, like, I love teaching, but it's really hard to teach in a ring where there's a lot of horses, like they were talking about earlier. So, I don't know, I would just, that's, like, kind of what I had to say, was just, like, encouraging the ability to improve the property and, you know, if we put new horse, more horses there, to have more paddocks, you know, and, like, just being able to build, build a little bit more on the property just to, like, I don't know, I mean, there are a lot of people coming out here and they, their kids want to ride, and it's a good opportunity for us to make money, for them to enjoy what they're doing, or at least not make money, but, like, survive, you know? And, and so, that's all. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Someone else wish to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom? Yes?
Yes. Who are you?
Thank you.
My name is Michael Mason. I'm actually the builder, the contractor that was on the property during the stop work order. There's a couple of references to vehicles driving over the recharge easements, I think, the drainage easements. I think there's some terminology issues with their argument that the actual easement is to the east of what's actually being driven on. The area that was cut in next to, may I use these? Can I use these pictures? So this area that was actually cut in was actually part of an initial grading plan. So none of this is natural. This was already not restored, it was already improper. So this was actually an area that had already been, you know, segregated, whatever term you'd like to use. I think also, the farm had sacrificed a lot, all the borders and stuff there, it sacrificed a lot with the community getting built around it, and I think this is, you know, kind of a fair trade-off. They're looking for rings. I build rings all over the country. I've built in California, New Mexico, built in the Hamptons regularly, Mutton Town, you know, literally all over the country. I've never run into such a problematic issue, and I feel like it's something that could irreparably affect the horse community in this area, which is the biggest draw. Home owners also complaining about areas not being fixed and disregard to that, but stop work order prohibits us from doing anything. So although it's a valid complaint, without approval to fix anything or actually move forward, there's not, there's nothing that can be done. So it's not the, you know, us ignoring the issue, it's just something you guys don't allow. And I also would like to put a focus that the two rings, that he's sacrificing the one large ring, which would be restored, which is the, the main cutout over here. So this would be restored to grass. And these other two rings were carefully placed outside of any recharge or any drainage easement. So it should not affect any, you know, should be no issues whatsoever with the building and the construction of these rings. Also, with the complaint about drainage issues, these rings increase the drainage ability in that area. So you're going to have the recharge basins taking on less water, which obviously, if you guys, you know, know the rain count, they're calling for higher capability of drainage systems now. So this also helps that, you know, the volume of water actually flows. Also, as far as the manure, the manure initially was dumped in this cut-in area, and that was just perking directly into the groundwater. So he's actually taken a step that wasn't even required and put them on concrete pads. So he's been proactive to protect the surrounding area, protect the topography, protect the environment. So I think that should also be something that's acknowledged. And these are the standard. These are not regular backyard horses we're dealing with. We're dealing with horses that some people are paying six figures, you know, seven figures for. These are top, top-level riders. And to have them ride, we're just looking to put sand, we're looking to create a safe environment that drains, that provides the right stability and, you know, absorption for them, for the animal itself as well as the rider. I think to prohibit that, I mean, if they're going to ride, it's just, it's going to be in mud, it's going to create more of an issue, more of a, an eyesore to the area. So I think there should be, you know, careful consideration that they have gone over and beyond placing these rings in no affected area. It's, it's simply an open space, and they've tucked it close to the existing boundaries to a point that doesn't really affect the view or anything. And if you were to really see what these rings look like when they're done, the way they've come in the last ten years, the technology and the sand, and, you know, it's, it's a natural sand, it's not anything that's manufactured, it's a natural sand, but just the stability, and it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful sight to see. And like I had mentioned before, the topography that they're talking about, the natural vistas is not natural, you know? It was okay for it to be destroyed when they had their houses built, but now that we're actually trying to fix it, because it is causing issues, backflowing water to the indoor, which is a steel building, which is creating, you know, some rust and some deterioration of the building itself. So not only is he protecting his investment, this is an area that's already been touched and not restored properly to begin with. And I just, I think it's very important that you consider the rings, you consider the business owners that operate at that farm, that right now, with this stop work order, you're prohibiting their income, and you're pushing people out of a community that's starving for equestrian, and that's it.
Thank you. I think you had someone on Zoom, Kevin?
Yes, two people here. One first.
Hi, hi, everyone. My name is Nicole Adams. I live at Eleven Baby Road in South Harbor. I'm a local architect and equestrian, and I've lived and worked and raised my family, who are also equestrians, since two thousand. And I, myself, have been a resident in South Harbor since childhood activities. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to advocate for the equestrian industry in South Hampton, the Hamptons in general. And I think it's been, it's been really well said in the past, few speakers, horses and activities around them have a long connection with the East End and its rural landscape or rural history. But this industry, as well as others, the black farming that have defined the Hamptons and attracted people to us, has been dying off. It's just really difficult to endure the high cost of operating, and the industry of building has become our sole industry, which I'm a part of. And I also wanted to add that I was a boarder at Two Trees before the new owners for two years and, and couldn't stand it. So although it is picturesque and people are accustomed to the way it was, it was, it's not a up-to-date facility. It's not, it, just like everyone has spoken, the, you know, this industry is, is very difficult to, to make a living doing and doing it well, and these new owners are at the top of our sport, and they, they are going to bring life back to this farm in a quiet, quality, elegant way with the excellence that they demand every move they do. And I wish that you could somehow know, know that and trust that. And every other industry, every building, everything has to evolve and get better, every sport, right? And so this sport has evolved, so what it was in, you know, two thousand and ten even is not what it is today. So I think that kind of needs to be taken into consideration, and I would just hope to say that, you know, the town and the residents would embrace and support and help the equestrian industry to thrive and to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela?
Hi, good evening. I'm Pamela Harwood, president of the Bridgehampton Civic Association. Our organization is consistently advocated to protect the covenants governing our agricultural reserves. I've had quite an education tonight. I remember when we first purchased our home in Bridgehampton in nineteen ninety-one, we were told, oh my God, you're going to live in the potato fields north of the highway, when people used to ask whether you were north or south of the highway, and at one point, I was told, no, you live in horse country. But when we moved here, everyone's been talking about how horses are riding or what drive people to the Hamptons. No, I mean, what drives people to the Hamptons is the oceans, the bays, the water. You can get, you can get riding in a lot of places in the country, but you can't get ocean everywhere. I'm involved in the horticultural community as well, and most of our people come out here to tour gardens and, and to gardens. So I would say that this is, the biggest driver of people visiting the Hamptons is a little limiting. We regularly cite the town comprehensive plans to keep our agricultural lands and site vistas, and those site vistas are those goals, are the basis of the restrictive easements. More horses and possible events equal more traffic. When I was first out here, the only big equestrian event was the Hampton Classic, and that's also in Bridgehampton. And we're talking about polo shows, events, there's going to be more traffic. People say they don't want more traffic, what do we do about the traffic? And we need more housing, more horses, where are people going to live? Not just who are these people going to be? So this is squirreling into many issues that the community has to deal with. This covenant is only twelve years old, and I have to assume the owner bought it originally because there's a discounted price when you have restrictions on a property. And then what we're seeing in Bridgehampton is everyone keeps coming back. You, you buy a property, you know the restrictions on it, you wait a few years, and then you come back and you ask to, you know, reduce some of those restrictions. We are concerned about the proliferation of the covenant amendments being requested in Bridgehampton, and this is only one of three right now. Now, a lot of people might say that we're only talking tonight about this application for Two Trees Farm, but are we really only talking about that? Right now, there are three agricultural properties in Bridgehampton with covenants in place, and all three are asking to go beyond the covenants that are in place. So I think we have to look at the big picture here and not, and I think we have to see this request for a more intensive use in the larger picture of how many agricultural reserves are asking to come back and liberalize their restrictions, even though they knew those restrictions were in place. When this property changed hands in 2013 and the subdivision was created out of a larger parcel of open space, agreed to the restrictions and reduced the number of horses that were allowed because it was a small parcel, and I know that's been pointed out earlier in this hearing. And so I think that's the reason the reduction of horses was requested. Now, it is true that paragraph seventeen, I think it was mentioned before, paragraph eighteen, what I'm seeing, paragraph seventeen certainly does say that the, the deplorant is allowed to come back to the town and apply to the planning board to amend the site plan and the restrictions. But that doesn't mean that the planning board has to grant that change. One can apply, but there's nothing in this covenant that says you will automatically be granted permission to increase the number of horses just because you apply. So I think the planning board has that discretion in their power. And just want to say that what good are the covenants when owners can come back for a few years later and ask for these restrictions to change? And, and also for the neighbors to always have to pay a lot of money to hire private attorneys like Mr. Ben. to hire private attorneys, like Mr. Benacasa, to, to defend the rights that they're entitled to sue when they bought these homes, when this new subdivision was created. And it's not just about the subdivision that's contiguous to this farm. This includes the entire Bridhampden area. How many horse farms do we have now? How many can Bridhampden really accommodate? And when I hear that people may go out of business and will lose this way of life, to me, it's a very recent way of life. It's a very recent intensity of the horse community asking for ever greater expansion of development. And these developments can include, are currently including on another property, the request for almost an apartment-like affordable, you know, worker housing. Is this property going to need the same if they increase the number of horses? So I just ask the planning board to please take this into account in the larger picture, how intensive and how many horse farms are in Bridhampden right now? How much traffic? How much, how much can we stand? And do we want to keep giving away reductions in the restrictions of the easements? What good are the easements if they can constantly be amended and changed? And thank you very much for your patience and, and your attention to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Sue Port, and I'm actually a boarder at Two Trees. And we need more rings. I, I don't know how else to say it. And where they're planning on putting the rings, it doesn't encroach on the neighborhood at all. It's, and it will actually look prettier because where is now, it's kind of like rocky where the, like weeds and grass. And during the summertime, when they have pony camp, which, you know, brings in a lot of money for everyone, it's all good for everyone, you can't use the ring. We only have two rings for how many horses? Eighty? Eighty-nine horses? We have two outdoor rings. That's it. And you do have to be careful of kids all the time. And, you know, it, it's just such a good business. And there's no reason not to, like, make it better and encourage people to come to the farm and to ride. And we really do need another ring.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Nika Strunk. I'm also an attorney for the applicant. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to address some of the things that we heard from the public. I'm working with Kiran on this, and I'm also involved in the litigation that the neighbors have commenced. I think the, the first thing to say is that the right to farm laws in this, in the town code and in the state code are very, very powerful. Two Trees is a, an incredible agricultural asset to the town of Southampton. And it's appropriate for it to be, for it to change over time. And it, this, this board, I think if you look at its past decisions on the Two Trees Farm property, has never said that this is it forever. They've, there's always been an understanding that the number of horses may change. You know, certain aspects of the site plan may change. And, and we're going through that process here. Now, there are no violations of any of the covenants and restrictions or easements proposed by what, what we have here. We have a simple application for two additional sand rings, a farm gate, good manure storage. It's, it's, it's very, it's very basic stuff for an operating horse farm that, as you've heard, definitely needs it for safety. I've heard some things tonight that are, that I don't understand from, but I, I think with respect to the number of horses, the town code has a very specific formula, and it's based on acreage. It's based on land. So it's really a matter of math, how many horses you can have. And this farm can accommodate 107 horses. They didn't have 107 horses in 2012 when David Wellentis made his application to this board. They only had 89 at that time. That's what they requested. But the covenant, which could have been read by anyone who purchased nearby, specifically allows for it to be updated. It says in paragraph 17, I think the last speaker referred to it, "A horse farm is currently operating on Lot 18. The number of horses permitted thereon shall comply with Town Code, Section 330-162.1B, as well as the conditions of the Site Plan Special Exception Permit's approval obtained for a horse farm use on Lot 18. The number of horses permitted pursuant to the currently effective Site Plan/Special Exception Permit is 89. The declarant, its successors, and assigns reserves the right to apply to the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton to amend the Site Plan/Special Exception Permit for any reason, including without limitation, the condition that limits the number of horses permitted to 89." So this was, the, the possibility that this could happen was clearly anticipated. This is a large horse farm and it can, according to the standards set forth in the town code, it can accommodate 107 horses. It's really just a matter of math. It's not a matter of what the planning board's intent was in 2011 or anything like that. I, I, I think that the builder, the ring builder spoke, spoke effectively to the problems that have been created by the work that was done, which was then suddenly subject to a stop work order in, like, in medias res. So there was, they had been unable to address this problem. Kiran is working with, with the property owner on addressing code violations that have been brought against the farm by the town. And that's, you know, that's a completely separate matter. And it is being totally worked out in the justice court. I was with, I was there the last time it was on. And Justice Weber said, "It seems to me all the town is doing is enforcing its code on this property," because it has really received a lot of attention from the town. And we're working with the town to get past that. So with respect to, there was talk about an increase in polo fields. There's no increase in polo fields. There's a polo area shown on the approved site plan from 2011. And that's, that hasn't changed. There's no rings in drainage areas. And I, I think Mrs. Farrell said something about a private covenant. There is a private covenant on this property that, that covers areas bordering the five lots off of Polo Court. And, but that private covenant, first of all, is really not relevant to this board. But it, it does not prohibit driving. I mean, it prohibits parking. It prohibits structures, but it does not prohibit driving. Obviously, a farmer, a farm operation is allowed to drive on its own property. So, and that's, that's not, that doesn't violate anything. There is a provision against driving within the drainage easement areas or the recharge areas. That's not what's happening. So I, I think we certainly do comply with all the special, special exception standards. We set that out in the application documents. And I think that's, that's all. If I, if I got all my notes correctly of what everybody said. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we'd ask that the record be, the hearing be closed and 10 days be given for written comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone else on, on Zoom?
No one else.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Well, we are going to keep it open. We're not closing it. We're going to keep it open for 30 days. So.
Written comment period?
No, written. And the next hearing would be, no, not a written comment.
Oh, the adjourned hearing?
Yeah.
I don't have the date. What day?
What's the next one?
April.
April 20?
Twenty-four.
Excuse me, are we?
Twenty-fourth.
Are we having another hearing date?
Yeah, we're setting one.
Why? I mean, everything's been discussed.
Well, there are people who could not attend tonight who wanted to attend.
They could, there's a, give a 30-day written comment period.
The jurisdiction of this board, Karen.
I know, well, I can ask for a shorter time period.
I appreciate it.
I have that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The 24th.
Is that two weeks from now?
That's, that's, no, four weeks.
Yep.
Yeah, because we're trying to correct a mess that, because of the stop work order.
Understand.
You know, there's erosion and stuff going on.
Okay, so April 24th.
So I have a motion, okay?
Adjourned.
To, to the public hearing.
Yeah, to adjourn, yeah. To adjourn to April 24th. Motion by Dennis, second by George, only favor. Close extension, six and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you.
On the court, Dennis, only favor.